What would they do to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands? One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Thank you everybody for coming today, being in attendance. Uh, first item up for the agenda would be approval of the N S. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same side. Motion carries. Approval of bills. Uh, in the packets and then additional bills. I think we're on our, our guests this morning.
These two bigger ones on the highway, please, I'll ask the motion player to explain.
Okay.
Motion to approve the N S.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the N S, roll call please.
Brown.
Aye.
Hope.
Aye.
Lightcon.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Financial report. Financials are in the packet as well. Hope everybody had an opportunity to go through those. Any questions? Anything to point out, Candy?
Nope.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the financials as submitted. And roll call as well.
Lightcon.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Hope.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Uh, treasurer's checks. Motion and a second to approve the treasurer's checks as submitted. Roll call as well.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Lightcon.
Aye.
Hope.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Anything we need to add on there, Candy?
Nope, I think.
Yep.
Anybody else?
I'm on the motion. I have to do the agendas.
Motion and a, uh, second to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Agenda is approved. First item up is Sarah Whitey, Extension Service.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I, I brought some people with me today, but first of all, I just want to let you guys know that, uh, we did, uh, offer the agent position, uh, to Lindsay Overmeyer, and she has a wealth of knowledge in the agent field. She comes to us from Ohio. She's currently living in Nebraska, uh, where she just finished up her doctoral research, I guess you could say, uh, and she did accept the position. So, uh, right now she will start November 1st is the, is the goal. So, and thank you Adam Lightcon for serving on the committee. We appreciate it. Uh, so if you have anything to add about Lindsay or, uh...
Uh, no, I mean, yeah, she, she, her background is in, uh, well, she knows North Dakota from some of her work yesterday, so she isn't gonna come into life in North Dakota, so to speak. Uh, uh, yeah, she has her, uh, her doctoral work in, I believe it's plant health or plant pathology, something like that. So she's got a lot of background information when it comes to cropping systems and crop scouting and everything you can pick up off of the public extension. That and our agent, we were, uh, her presentation that she gave was very, very good. We're very impressed by it, so I think she's gonna be a good thing, so.
Right.
Excited to get her on board.
Yeah, the presentation that I would, I would get from them.
Yeah, and, and you could just tell she, she did her background research around the area. She talked to other extension agents, other crop consultants in the area to learn about our area previous to coming and talking about different issues that effectively created greater culture of that nature. So, already had started making contacts with other local agents and things like that, which is very impressive, so, yeah, she's, I think she's gonna fit in.
November 1st?
Mm-hmm. Three weeks.
Yeah, that's, yes.
Great.
Yeah.
Dino was hoping to get her started earlier.
I know.
Two week turnaround here from Nebraska, find a place to live pretty quick, so.
Yeah. So, so yeah, so that's exciting news. Um, the other exciting news is that it is 4H week, and if you've been following us on our social media, we've been having some 4H trivia and, um, some other fun things. We got a coloring contest and, um, it was Wear Green Day yesterday. A few people were asking us what in the world are you wearing green for? So, uh, but we have, um, a couple of our awesome older 4Hers here. We have Matea and we have Adam, and they're gonna tell you a little bit about their 4H careers, a little bit about what some of their favorite projects are, what some of the things that they do in 4H, and we'd love for them to share.
Great.
Who's first, Adam?
I'll start. And I'm Adam. I'm in Bird Cropsers. I was president of it last year, and I really enjoyed 4H. I mean, I learned a lot, I had a lot of fun, and this year I went to the state shoot for 4H, and I really enjoyed that, and I did well. And 4H is just a lot of fun and a good learning experience.
Thank you. Great, you too, thank you.
Hi, I'm Matea. I am a part of Ramsey Riders 4H Club. Um, my club, we do a lot of, like, horse work. We work with horses, and my experience in 4H is learning leadership and, um, communication skills. I went to a camp in June called UIC in Fargo, and I met a lot of new people, and that inspired me to, to inspire other people to go, since I was the only one from County that wanted to.
Yeah, so there, you see that, uh, 4H has, um, stuff for younger kids, the older kids, and, um, a lot of different ways to meet calls. I'll point out, we've got an awesome 4H dad in the, in the house right here. Um, we've got a couple of kids in 4H, um, but we currently have about, we have eight clubs.
The clubs?
And now is the time to start registering 4H, 4H, and we get, giving a lot of calls, so.
We've added at least 15 members just in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah. How many, uh, participants are in 4H?
Last year when we ended our year, we had 202. This year they're re-enrolling now, so we don't have a current.
Current count, but 202, that's a lot of kids.
Just sending out here, did you start it?
I started the club last year, yeah, because we just have so many kids calling, so I have a club of about 25 to nine-year-olds. We are the closer critters. They give us their own name. Yep, yep. So we just want to thank you by, um, on three, it's a donut, and Matea has a, I love 4H, good, we hope you'll wear that with pride, so.
And as a 4H dad, I'll say the 4H leaders are phenomenal, so it's, they're, they're, it's not a secret on why the, uh, high participation in 4H.
Adam and Matea, how long have you each participated in 4H?
I've been in it for six years.
I did it for seven years.
Wow, that's fantastic. Have you heard of that Buffalo 34H or that something?
And a couple of our commissioners are also 4H dads, and we have a 4H grandpa. And I think someone who's very into 4H, correct?
I'm good.
Yes.
And just a, just a note, and we always use new, um, club leaders, so if anyone knows of a past club leader or something that would like to start one, we'd be very interested.
Always in need of, always in need of volunteers.
I'm on you guys. None of you want to know it's? Now? Alright, well, hopefully. Where most people will be, they'll come around. Okay. So we just want to thank you for everything.
Thank you. Yeah.
That was a nice day more fun.
Yeah. Uh, we're a little early for our 830 desert health conference call. Uh, so, Kevin, if you wanna go ahead with the on the highway.
Okay. We wanna start with the moderator discussion, along with these guys who are here? Yeah, okay. Well, essentially, I'll have the copy of what how the bids went, so. Review of the meeting. The first machine there, the 772, really doesn't meet the weight spec we are looking for, so. We're probably looking at the last two groups of numbers there. On the outright purchase, CAT is low, but when you look at the trade-in values, and then purchasing three machines, then, uh, John Zero is low with 3872. Then when you go further, if you do look at the buyback numbers, which is kind of what we asked for, I guess, um, the overall spending money after the whole seven years, then CAT gets low again with the bottom, figures on the bottom there for three machines, in those seven years, we'd spend $322,035. So that's kind of an overview of how the bids went. I don't know if you guys want to give a short presentation, or, I guess we should offer that.
So, when you're talking about buyback, does this guarantee or no?
It is guaranteed, yeah. The guarantee of buyback after seven years, that's kind of, that's the number you.
And our machines, now we're trading back, we kept for seven years, because that's the warranty we got on it.
Correct.
So the intent would be we would keep it for seven years, and that would be guaranteed.
Yep, the warranty of, uh, I guess, pretty close to being, uh, we got.
And is that the only spec on the 772 that does not meet the specifications?
It's weight.
Right.
But again, you know, we, like I said in the part in the past, you know, we can blade rows with a small machine, but when I come time to follow some old and push that snow off into the ditch part, and we need the weight and the horsepower. That's why we sized back on that one. So when you think about it, if we were trying to push a smaller machine, but it takes twice the long box, maybe the snow wouldn't get pushed out near as far, that type of thing.
Does it meet spec with this premium circle?
Uh, yeah, I look at it, no, I guess, I'll tell you it will, but it adds 364 pounds, the premium circle, but then it's still short. I don't know about, it adds more than half, but it's short 364 pounds.
And how much is the overall weight of the machine? 51,000 pounds or something?
Uh, if you look at the spec, the way we asked, we're in the, in the printed specs, it's like 390,000. Oh, 39,000.
39,000, okay. So 39,000 pounds, you're talking about the difference in, you know, being off by less than 1%. You know, is there, is there a really noticeable difference in performance on less than 1%? Just out of curiosity, because I just mean.
My, with my personal opinion on running, uh, the graders, that we have, yes, in the winter time.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna ask the leading question, I just really, I don't hear. That's just experience that I have with running the pieces that we have. We've had several different ones in the winter time, it is a few difference, like a little six-liner, fun way. I think we had someone four-cylinder, some, the six-cylinder, it's a few difference, comes with that, right? Part of the four-cylinder, but we're not packing horsepower, that's a problem too.
I guess if you ask any county, they'll tell you the heavier, stronger the machine, the better it will start. I mean, that's pretty typical.
What we did, uh, add a premium circle to our machine to bring the weight up, just as Kevin said, and some of the other options we have on our machine, when you get down to the delivered weight of the machine, there's very little difference in weight strategy, whether they put the sound weight on the other option of the machine, or the downwind, or the other features, it's still equates to, like you said, less than 1% weight difference. You're talking less than 1,000 pounds difference. If you go with a bigger machine, then, you know, our weights are comparable, and then we're adding more horsepower, again, we're kind of forced in because of a few hundred pounds. We're forced to bigger, better next class of machines, which is a 300 horsepower machine, so. Look at the one machine we provided, it'll show you our 872 versus CAT 16, we should, you know, make it enable even plan until the weight's out of port, we should force CAT to bid 160 each time, raise horsepower up. It would get even playing field for us to get against. You know, otherwise, um, just as on last night, where we get a bigger machine against a smaller machine, we just can't compete.
So, you know, it's hard, that's, that comment's probably true, but as far as, you know, adding the weight of those things we asked for, Catfield's doing the same thing, or we're asking for a bigger mow board, it's heavier, we're asking for other options that are heavier, we ask for the printed specs, because that's all we have to go by, really.
If I may say something, we gotta start somewhere at the base weight, and the 150 is at 40,380 base weight, so our, our 150 is bigger than the 872 base weight, and it's over 2,000 pounds bigger than the 772, where we start out at the gate at base weight, so. They add weight, we also add weight, so what we're after is the base weight, so we know where the specifications come in at, because that's what's printed out, and from there we both equal out adding weights, so.
You gotta look at your brochure, it'll specify what mow board, and exactly how you're getting that weight compared to our brochure. It's showing you what mow board we're using.
It's specified, the specifications say right in there, 14-foot mow board, and then so forth.
But how much of the weight?
It's the standard equipment.
It doesn't say in the brochure, I've never seen it says 14-foot mow board, I guess.
Well, instead of having you guys sit and debate each other's machines, how about if we have RDO give a presentation on what they, they get, and what we do the same thing with what we get, and the benefits of, of each, and we'll, we'll take Kevin's recommendation, and we'll try to finish that up in the next 10 minutes. No, go ahead.
Uh, so we got, uh, 872 GP that we bid, uh, joystick, um, or figure chip controls, kind of a personal preference, no, no difference in price between the two. Um, it's gonna have more horsepower, uh, if you wanna go by bridge of brochure weight, it's a little lighter than the Catfield 150, but it will be a heavier machine, um, than the 150. Did you have anything to add? Yeah, it's a heavy duty machine, I guess if you're looking for recommendations, that's sort of like your tribe is using 872, I'm gonna brought it up in the last meeting. Uh, if you're trying to play a screen on it, they're, they're really good at running them, but you can't get to run the bigger machines, like Kevin said before, the weight horsepower is a lot on this one, so. Uh, I agree, I know, uh, maybe you should try one of our 872 to see what it does, but, uh, maybe we don't ask for you to try all three of them, maybe you just try one of our machines to see how you like it, and then it'll give you an idea if you want to up the horsepower on the next meeting to see if from the next round of graders, you wanna go a higher horsepower. All the counties that we serve, it's from under more graders, 770s, 772s, 872s, they all pass and all, I mean, we've got very satisfied customers all over. If you wanna talk into a customer, you can use references with our machines. It comes down to a bidding game of numbers on a spreadsheet, you know, with his personal preference, if your preferences cap, that's what it is, and we can sound that. Basically, the graders will perform as well as one another within a few hundred pounds. Kind of by a Chevy or Ford, you know, it, yeah.
Any else? Go ahead, Butler.
So the 150 that we, uh, bid today is, I wanna say it's a well-balanced machine. Um, horsepower is a benefit, but when you can't match with the weight, the balance isn't right, you can spin out, and as Blaine said, I mean, it's, it's a big factor to have weight. The, the neighboring counties that we got, Royall County, Tonner County, Benson County, Nelson County, if you add them all up, they got 27 150 all-wheel drives. Um, I got good relationships with the operators, and we listen to what they have to say. We've also talked to the Ramsey County operators, right now you guys got six Catfield machines. Um, the last time that we had a cat care meeting, we asked the operators if they would change anything, and they said we hope we get in another Catfield just because of the comfort and how they like the machine. So, I guess, um, we're bidding a machine that you guys have today, and we're hoping that, um, we can continue doing business with you.
Okay. Thank you. Kevin, anything you wanna?
No, the, we tried about the operators who like those machines, uh, we did have, we, last go around, we had two 870s, they were at the 872, which is six-wheel drive versus a rear-wheel drive. And, uh, they have the steering wheels in front, but some of the operators were saying, uh, the view was different, intended a little bit, the steering wheels there, but, um, as far as operation, maintenance was, and service was never an issue with the deer, I will say that. They are a little, the, the cats are a little more, um, easier to sit in and, and be comfortable, little bit more, uh, adjusting on the controls. From the old machines anyway, I'm not sure what the new ones are like. Yeah, I guess, to be responsible to the taxpayers, I would look at that, uh, total expenditure over seven years, and my recommendation would be, and also for me, it'd be nice to have all the parts the same, uh, all that kind of stuff, I mean, it's not super important, but I guess my recommendation would be go with the three Catfielders 150s, just because of the price of trade-in value at seven years.
The one time we did John Deere's, uh, they had a steering wheel, the cat went away from the steering wheel. There's still steering wheels?
No, there's not steering wheels.
No? Cat doesn't have one, we don't.
We did not expect the steering wheel, I mean, you have to ask for the steering wheel in the cat.
That's a better, different model, one general, one forty. Which is a smaller training, yeah.
So the John Deere.
Yeah, yeah.
We did ask for the joystick operation, and they did, did that, but with either it's a joystick operation, the steering wheel is still.
Still off, or steering wheel was all closed. That's what the operator wanted, was the steering wheel, I remember that then.
That's one of the questions.
It was closer money than this.
Well, I guess, from my perspective, the one thing that I'm not clear on is normally when we take low bid, we take the low bid, not the, not the high trade-in value seven years from now. Right? So it seems like the only way that you can argue that CAT has the low bid this time is by doing some gymnastics about down the road trade-in things. I don't think that we normally have that as part of our consideration, and I'm not sure entirely whether or not that could bend up with us and hot water, because we're not, you know, taking the low bid because we're saying, oh, well, in the future it'll be potentially cheaper by. Well, I understand that, but.
Well, a lot of people do look at, a lot of counties do look at that, though, they ask for service, fuel consumption, all this, a lot of costs of over a seven-year period, and basically, we are on that. And we didn't get that in-depth of what fuel costs are gonna be, what the maintenance costs are gonna be. We just look for buyback.
Do you answer?
Uh, yes, you also look at, you know, their, these buybacks, right now we are offering more money than the guaranteed buybacks on those as well, so that's not saying seven years from now, it'll be.
What you're saying is our guaranteed buyback on our machines we got now is 130,000, and they're offering us 140, 144, that's decent.
So, yeah, they're not for sure numbers, depending on the market, we also, guaranteed buyback is just a number that you ran, you can run with all the graders, all dealers out at the time, how much money, how much interest, putting all fifty or seventy years from now, guessing what they're gonna pay.
Right, which we're guaranteeing, no matter what the market is, 150.
Yeah, well, I understand that. It's just, you know, it's one of these things where when the, the machine that, that RDO is claiming is comparable, and I'm not making a statement about whether or not it is, is a hundred thousand dollars cheaper on the front end, and the machine that it seems to me like everybody in the room agrees is much bigger machine is still 30,000 dollars cheaper on the front end. You know, I, I guess it's, it's one of those questions like, well, why would, why would you want a much bigger machine? And I'm not trying to, to beat you guys up, I just know that this has now come up twice, and I wanna make sure that going forward, we don't end up in these situations where we're trying to figure out our head from our tail, you know, and on how to actually to run these bids where everybody that did bid felt like they got a fair shake at it, so.
Adam, Blaine, anything?
I, I mean, I, I can understand the thought process behind, you know, and I always question too how we, you know, what the legality is of it is when we talk about buying off the bid or buying off buyback specs on something where it's just 300 dollars. And, and that's always what gives me, you know, because then if, if we're talking strictly mid-spec under the specs that were presented, as well as, um, just a little bid, then CAT technically is the little bid, because they meet spec lower than the 872, but then if we're not gonna use buyback either, then we can't use trade-in either. It's just a straight line, what's the cost? To me, I like looking at the full buyback, because if I know I've got a guarantee and I know my L plate, then I think that's the most reasonable way to look at it. To say that that's the bottom line, 322 versus 325 on the buyback, we cat means on both sides, even if they aren't the bigger machine. And I, I don't know, I'm just kidding, the dog of the fight, either deer comes at home, I find a deer too, I try to hold the deer on my farm, so. So, I guess, one piece of, one piece of. That cowboy, three cowboy, one cowboy, a guarantee that that cowboy's in order in five years, and you have the one? Yeah, it, yeah, I mean, if it. Or, one higher than the other one. It'd be interesting if we can get our equipment, guaranteed buyback, five to seven years down the road, that'd be a good deal to me. I'd take that, Harvey. Blaine, is there any limit on the hours you have on the machines with the buyback?
Our warranty runs out at 8500, there's no limit on the hours, but our warranty runs out at 85.
That's on both of them.
On both of them.
In the past, you set it up so at the end of seven years, you kind of, at the end of the hour.
Yeah, we'll probably, it's about, you'll be within 500 dollars. Sometimes we go over, rarely we go over the order of another.
So we kind of know on the hour.
Yeah, exactly.
Like I said, the other time we won John Deere's, maybe the guys can steer it, uh, operators who are on the steering.
So.
And they were that close that time, you know, relatively, just because, you know.
For the sake of time, this commission's viewpoint is that the bottom line number is the number we're gonna care about as a little bit, is that correct?
That's my, are you adding the whole project or?
Yeah, what I'm saying is, every, everybody here thinks that we should use the bottom number as a little bit, now much for the.
Well, I think we should use 150 to, to Catfield top 12 is lower, because the 772 technically under the spec, they're testing that.
I know, I'm not looking at that, I'm looking at, I, I.
I understand, right.
So, but that's fine, I'm just, I'm asking because I, I wanna make sure that going forward, that we're gonna, oh, I probably won't be on the commission at that point, that we're gonna use that same number always, right? Which is good, as long as we know that it is.
Well, in all honesty, if we could violate, when we violate vehicles for the sheriff's department and stuff, we guarantee buyback, I take that. As well, I think that's a, we're grosses are looking at total L plate of taxpayer dollars over certain standards.
Yeah, no, I understand, okay, and I'm making motion that we accept the little bit, we had a call.
Motion and second that we accept the bid from Catfield Buffalo Machinery. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. And now it's time to. Time for the, uh, looking for some justice help.
Thank you.
The conference administrator has joined the conference. There are three attendees on the conference call.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Girlie, this is Jeff Reth from Ramsey County. I would presume that we have Eddie Pierce and Benson coming to express him.
Eddie's here.
Eddie's here.
Benson? Has Benson Tony joined us yet? And then I'll get them, just the three of us. As soon as we get ahold of Benson County, we'll call the, uh, NIMAC board and. Oh, is that right? Benson, Benson County, are you with us now?
I'm here, yeah.
Well, it's called the media, the, uh, late group, Mr. Health, uh, Joint Order Commission Order. Uh, first item on the agenda would be to, uh, election of the chairman. Do you have any nominations for a chairman for the joint commission?
I'm here, speaking, yeah, I'll, uh, I'll.
All right, and Mr. Stefan has.
I'll second that.
Mr. Brown, we have a second.
Thank you, Mike.
Any, uh, further nominations?
I move that nomination cease.
Motion to cease nominations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, the same sign. All right. We will continue on then. Thank you. Roll call of counties.
Eddie's here.
It doesn't matter. It's up to you.
Individual, uh, members from Pierce, you want to go ahead and, uh, state your name?
Mike Bridges and Mike Blenner, Jerry Hubbard, David Megler.
Eddie?
Blaine, how are you?
Dale Root.
David.
Okay, Benson County?
David.
All right, Ramsey County, uh, myself, Jeff Reth, Edward, Lucas Wakefield.
And Lemon, Blaine Ball.
Okay, local counties has been completed. Take a look at the minutes from, uh, last year's meeting. Go ahead, bro.
I will say.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from last year's meeting. Any additional corrections? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For both same sign. Minutes are approved. Twenty twenty two budget, I will, uh, I'll turn things over to Mr. Alan McKay.
Go ahead. Thank you very much. Uh, as you can see, if you look at the budget, if we're asking for, uh, exactly the same amount as last year, um, and that's six hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars and change. Um, and, uh, uh, the bill levy changed a little bit because of what land values changed slightly. Uh, so it's about a, it's basically a break even budget for last year. Um, how we did that was because of, of money from COVID, uh, that we've gotten from the state and the Fed. And they actually got us some, some numbers that we actually have in the budget this year as compared to other years. They usually come late with how much they're going to give us. So that is us. You'll notice that's a difference. Uh, we had, uh, immunization HE is on the second page. That's immunization health equity, which was two hundred and fifty thousand five hundred. And health equity was about sixty two, five hundred, uh, and COVID was about a hundred thousand dollars. So, uh, those numbers could change yet again, uh, as they, they've gotten additional money for, for COVID, for public health and and the state health department. So, but at least we got a line I got formed this time, which was nice. Um, if you noticed anything else that you have questions on, those would be the big items that would be different from in the twenty twenty one budget. Um, anybody have any question?
Yeah, Alan.
Yes.
Mike Bridges is in here. I noticed in the paper that you had a, uh, or, uh, who did you pay, paid the house there for fourteen thousand dollars for the use of a health nurse one day a week?
That's correct. That, that came through. They got some money from, uh, that's for COVID to do exactly that. Um, and we, we sat down with the rugby school and, and made that agreement. Um, in Devil's Lake, all true provided, um, the high school with a, and the school system with a nurse plus, uh, twenty five thousand dollars a year for ten years. Um, so we're not, we're not providing that for Devil's, for, for Ramsey County. Um, and we have Benson, there are several schools. We have yet to, uh, meet with all of them yet. Uh, so, um, these are the ones that are done, both Ramsey and Pierce.
Okay, Alan, this is Terry Hubbard.
Yeah.
So I, I, I guess I know an issue with that.
Okay.
Because of the fact that the taxpayers of rugby are only paying, okay?
Yeah.
For the health nurse for five days a week. Okay, now two days a week. And now with the taxpayers are paying again, basically to have her at the school. And then we have to just turn around and pay for her assistance. So, you know, why are we doing that?
Well, because, uh, you're paying for her salary is four days a week. We're, we're getting the, her fifth day from the school. And, uh, if she wants to, if she votes five days, then we will hire another nurse to take care of the school. Matter of fact, we already did that with some COVID money. There's another nurse, uh, helping out at the school that's, that they're also paying. Uh, because, uh, Sam didn't have enough time, uh, to get everything they wanted. So, uh, we do have another nurse that, that helps them out also. Uh, she's a contract nurse, uh, and she's helping send them out in the schools. That's the, that's how that was negotiated. Yes.
Yeah, I still, I still don't agree with that. And especially because we have to pay her assistant besides, and now it sounds like her assistant's going to be working more hours than when we wanted it for.
Yeah, well, we pay for those extra hours through COVID money. Okay, those, you don't pay for those, Mike. We, we pay her extra to put in extra hours with COVID money. If we didn't have that, we wouldn't be able to do that.
So what that was done, this COVID money has done that and does it quit or?
That's correct. Uh, now, not for the school. Uh, I hope the school looks to the future to keep a nurse in the school. We've been working for that for a long time, but, uh, in some way or shape or form, we would like to keep a nurse in the school. It's, uh, they, uh, they really like it. It, it, uh, goes over very well and it's very efficient. So, um, uh, we hope it keeps going after COVID, but that's where the money is coming from right now.
So Alan, you said she, she only works four days a week and runs the school, so now she's down to three.
No, no.
For Friday, she hasn't for a long time.
She, she works, uh, basically you're paying for four days and, and the school's paying for a lot.
So we're down to three.
Wow.
Now, how does that work then?
Well.
So then we tell them, this is the beginning.
Yeah.
We're not gaining anything that way because we're paying her for days that, that she's not here anyway.
Well.
We're not paying her to go to school. We're not having a lot with that at all. But it's just the way it's playing out. You know what I'm saying?
Right, right. Well, it's, uh, we, if she has to, uh, work all five days, uh, she will, but, um, when that's necessary. Um, but yes, uh, the school is paying her for one day and another nurse besides her, uh, to help them out. And, uh, you're paying for four days, yeah.
But then I definitely get the three.
What's that? Well, and some weeks, yes, and some weeks, no. It depends on what goes on.
But I mean, she hasn't worked for Friday to work.
Well, that's not quite true, but, um, on general, you're, you're correct.
So, but still, okay, so if not, Alan, we're still, we're getting double hit here because we're paying taxes for, for the money that the district count gets out of Pierce County.
Yeah.
Never paying taxes to support the school, but the school is paying her too.
That's correct. That's correct. But then again, the school's getting that money came from the federal government through this COVID grant. And all the schools were available to get that. A lot of them took advantage of it. Some didn't, so.
That, that should pay for our assistant.
Well, that isn't what goes on there, but we can look at that, uh, uh, we pay for, uh, any hours over that, that she puts in. Uh, over what you paid for. So, um, we're paying her those extra hours.
Okay, now, just, just, this is off the ball, but she really gave up her other job to be here. All of a sudden, now you're going to cut it. What's she going to do that for now, for her time job?
I don't know. It's very clear that we are only paying that with COVID money and the contracts we made. It is very clear on where that money kicks up.
Okay, thank you.
You have? Any other questions?
Any other questions from anybody?
I'll make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty two budget.
Second, we have a motion from Adam Lepon to approve the twenty twenty two budget. We have a second from Richard Lucas Wakefield. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll, uh, do roll call for counties. Uh, Benson County?
Aye, David Davidson.
Aye, Melon.
Aye, Dr. Griffin.
Aye, Brown.
Aye, Mike Webb.
Okay, Eddie County?
Aye, Dale Root.
Aye, David.
Aye, Wendy Boyer.
Pierce County?
Aye, David Megler.
Aye, Jerry Hubbard.
Aye, Mike Bridges. Yes, Mike Brown.
And Ramsey County?
Aye, Edward.
Aye, Lucas Wakefield.
Aye, and Lemon.
Aye, Lemon.
And I, Jeff Reth. Motion carries. They have, uh, no further business?
No, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank, thank you, everybody online.
Thank you, everyone.
The meaning of the joint, uh, commissions of White Creek District Health has been. Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, you. Okay, continuing on, Kevin.
All right. Uh, Galen did deliver all of our chips for us that we, uh, needed this year. So I didn't waste this. Forty seven thousand eight hundred and seventy nine dollars and forty eight cents. So like a motion.
It will be approved. Second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and beg Galen for delivery of chips to make sure Seal Project. Uh, roll call.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lepon?
Aye.
Bull?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Reth?
Aye.
One of the hidden ways that I'm not listening to my agenda there was the one from KLJ for the engineering on the new box cover. Uh, we signed the contract. So this is a portion of that contract is seven thousand six hundred and thirty one dollars and seventy four cents for the design of that box cover. Motion to pay that. So.
Motion in a second to go ahead and pay KLJ Engineering for the design on the box cover. Seven thousand, six thirty one, seventy four. Is that, uh, payment?
Yes, I do have payment.
Uh, roll call, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lepon?
Aye.
Bull?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I like it when four H comes, but they need to go back so that I can't make motions.
Okay, well, just a heads up, uh, we need to replace the fuse panel in Webster. It's still the old twisted fuse. So when the insurance company was there, they said.
They didn't, they didn't like that too much.
I love to get quotes on that.
Well, so we don't have, you don't have quotes yet. You're just.
Get rid of the twisty ties?
Motion in a second to, uh, get quotes for replacing the, uh, fuse box, fuse panel in the Webster shop. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carries.
And also just a reminder that that public meetings for the US Highway two project is, uh, I find it important today. Just an informational meeting, public input. I guess it'd just be a good thing for commissioners to go to the system. When you get questions from the public, you might be able to answer the question for it. And I guess, uh, we got the letter from secondary roads for the county maintenance agreement. Remember every year we sign that agreement saying that we're maintaining all our CMC roads. And there's four signatures, the state's attorney, auditor, chairman, and myself have to sign that. So like a motion to have signed that agree. So.
Motion in a second to sign the, uh, letter for the secondary roads. Need further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, the last thing I have is when we were in Mid-Markham at the second very roads, we talked about that our Hamden project paving up there. They reminded us that we have to have the sidewalks ADA compliance, which we didn't have, not have figured in there. So just a heads up that Paul is working on getting that done. It's going to cost us a little more money. It's not an option. Either we don't pay through Hamden, which it really looks silly at all, or we have to do the sidewalks. So, and it's just that it curves around. So you don't have to replace all the sidewalks, but.
It's just, it's just on the corner.
Well, the good news about it is, is that once it's in compliance, it's not, we're gonna have to redo the sidewalks every single time we pave there. It's like a one time expense.
Oh, you know, Kevin, Kevin will get some nicer sidewalks on the corners.
You got any projected?
I have, I'm just, I, uh, it's just, I don't know, I say where, where they'll go and what they'll take.
So this is on existing sidewalks, correct? Cause we're not planning on putting any additional sidewalks or anything like that. How many sidewalks are there?
There's one sidewalk, full stop is about on the other side of ours is.
There's one on the block, both sides of the, one on the other side of the bars, there's one on, probably even. So there'd be either six or, sorry, six or seven ramps that you have to put in. Yeah, motion. No, uh, once you see a value maybe, but for now, just a heads up, it's gonna cost us more. They had, I guess it'd be. In the design, we had just figured out doing the uh, center thirty feet through town, just do an overlay and something like we did. Blocking a few years ago, I guess it, look on the aerial there, I guess we got a lot of those. Yeah, it was a few years ago when ADA wasn't a rusty back then, but now it's required.
Yeah, they're doing it.
I don't want to take more.
Loans back there, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we have to get our federal dollars through that section. And we're looking at options, so. Um, possibly just milling in front of the, one of the gas stations, wait, they take out their gas pumps, if they have a server shop there still. Looking at the construction and then possibly do.
Cause yeah, cause where the sidewalks are, there's gotta be curved down, correct? So we're gonna have to mill out and curb bike and stuff.
On both sides of the side, there's actually a second lit there. Well, they gave you bikes, used to be two steps. So that one we don't have to know, outside, but on the far side, the street was right up the top of the sidewalk, I think we don't. Know that out, it's, the water's gonna spill over and upright against the door. Against the building.
That would be very good.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the catch that I can then go up through that block. Kind of, just a big hatch, have to take out that, well, get it down below that. For this sidewalk. Yeah, probably look to see if it's cheaper. I'll look forward to seeing what the bid is for that.
Sure.
So that's all I got unless you guys have something to leave. You have anything else, Paul? Probably just a little, yeah, we have to include that in our design estimate for that project either, so. Something to be, to grab now. That's hoping we'll be able to just side fifty, never put thirty feet in the center, just put some light and touching those sidewalks.
Anything else? Anybody else for, anything for Kevin?
Just like a commanding Kevin on this good performance during Ben with you.
Did you do well?
We won. It was fun.
All right. Kevin's anything, anything else?
No, I'm I'm done with the make a board now, so. Time for one of you guys to get on.
Well, thank you for your uh, service on that. That was a fun organization. You guys have everything.
Yeah.
Well, there there's some fantastic representatives from Northeastern North Dakota on that committee. You know, be between yourself and then you have Stanley, uh, Senator Dick from up in Delaware County is the president. Several others on that, on that committee and on that skateboard, so. We have very well represented up here in the United States.
There was a final round, you call me a three on the board.
Uh, Jerry was on, Bill was on, myself.
So. We were running a cabal.
Five bucks for those Kelly.
Well, thank you again. Appreciate it. Uh, next item on the agenda would be the twenty twenty-two final budget. We had our budget hearing. On the twenty-first of September, political subdivisions have been working on their budgets since April, March of this year. So it's been a long process, um. Anybody have any reductions? We can't go up in our preliminary budget, but we get. Uh, we do a sit, if anybody has any reduction, get away with it.
I don't have any specific reductions. The only thing I would like to bring up for a, a week of discussion is. In sitting through some of the uh, presentations on the Association of Counties, especially the one on the ARPA funds. Um, there is going to be an option to use those ARPA funds that, you know, they, there's more clarity on what we can spend them on now. Uh, and we're gonna be at what, two point? Two, something like that, two point three million? And I don't know how we're going to spend all of those or what our plan is. Commissioner Footman actually was, or yesterday, we should have some type of a plan, at least how we wanna spend them. But particularly to this budget, if we did wanna do reductions of any nature, we could use some of those ARPA funds. Because you can use them for, for instance, paying this uh, new state's attorney salary, uh, things like that. That those portions of it, you can use those ARPA funds for. I'm not saying that's what we should do, just for, for the sake of everybody's knowledge. I think we could probably get away with doing some of that as well, since we can, we can say that we're using it for spacing and COVID relief and things like that. So we could probably use some of those dollars for things of that nature. Um, when we calculate, I don't know, Kenny's done it, but have we calculated that revenue loss any particular yet? Do we have a revenue loss? Cause that revenue loss that we would have had, when we could have used those dollars, then go up to highway, then, cause that wasn't allowable use. So there's a lot, there's a lot of different things we're gonna be able to use it for, and some of it's gonna be, uh, we can offset some salaries and things like that. Which will, you know, we're beating out of that, but I I don't know if we wanna down budget, cause I think, you know, it's one-time dollars. So we kinda, I think, we think we're gonna be staying, so we're near this level, it's probably good to get to that level and then we can kinda. Personal, you know, personal knowledge as we can do, but.
Keywords used at one time.
Yeah.
We start paying salaries. Two years on, we're just gonna throw that in, invite you guys to figure that out.
Exactly, and then the only, my only thought.
I'll put it there, cause I don't think we're laying off, it's just a serious term, anytime, so.
No, my only thought was if we could, if we could, maybe instead of going from, you know, we're going from ninety bills to a hundred, we could cut down and maybe split it in half. Just so we're, it's a more easy ramp up for the, for the, for the people of the public, you know, instead of having to have quite such a job, you know, then. It would be a use of those dollars, we would still be putting it in the budget and we could, you know, offset some of those at least. Just, just a thought, uh, it's, it's not a good hash to happen, but it's.
I like your thought.
I I think those ARPA dollars are gonna be kinda interesting once we get home, to figure out, you know, how much paychecks are gonna be involved with. If we wanted to use it for renovations and things of that nature, it's gonna be kinda, kinda, uh, it's gonna be worth it, Kenny, let's put it that way.
I am.
Joe Maddow, is it a big example?
I I I I think I'd be in favor of trying to focus on using those dollars for one, one-off, one-time expenses. Um, and just taking all the lumps now. I've read too many examples that I've read about in my studies of American government where. Would, they hit exactly that, what you said, which is, we'll, we'll work our way in, but it's sort of like a, an addiction to painkillers, right? Once, once you're using them for that, it's too easy to stay using them.
Yeah, no, but I I don't disagree. I'm just, I I'm fine with taking our lumps. It's not like we're asking for a twenty-five percent increase, we're at six percent or six point three or whatever. Which is, to me, after the year we had, what we have to deal with, all of the issues we're having to try to fund, it's not an unreasonable request. And I think you can even see it in the budget meeting, there wasn't anybody up in arms, they just were asking questions as to where all it was going. In all honesty, I think it's kind of amazing we only went up six point whatever percent, considering we had road budget in there, we had motor breaker costs in there. We had additional staff we happened to hire. I think it's a pretty solid question overall. It was just something that came to mind. I didn't know where everybody else was on, in terms of, you know, how we felt about going from that ninety to a hundred, we wanted to try to ramp. Take it for the staff.
No, I think every government agency's seen the same increase, city, the school, other counties, it's not just us.
I I and I, I think it's just a question of, like you said, some of the counties are probably using COVID dollars to offset some increases and things like that, but then it comes down to. Like, I've been talking yesterday with, with Jeff, it's not like we don't, I mean, I'm sure if we want to, we can find two point two million dollars for the projects that we probably have put off. Across the county easily if those dollars are available to spend on those things, whether it's courthouse improvements, whether it's. You know, there's a lot of different things that are, and and I I have a feeling, you know, cause those dollars are gonna be available for other infrastructure things that aren't roads, unless they make that change for roads. So there's going to be people that are going to be, you know, requesting additional dollars of that bottom line too, so. I think it's good to keep it utilized through improvements in the health.
So, uh, accordingly, it's, I I think based on our preliminary budget increase was eight hundred and six thousand four sixty-three increase. Between the Sheriff's Department, um, adding the additional deputies that we did, and the drug force, uh, drug task force agent. Two hundred and eight thousand five hundred dollars, uh, law enforcement center, four hundred thousand. Um, and that may be late on what's gonna be needed for incarceration costs. And then state's attorney for the additional uh, staff up there, a hundred and fifty thousand roughly.
Pretty much the entire increase.
Pretty much the entire increase.
So our budget actually was, other than the challenges we're facing, is pretty doggone good, cause we fit in a three percent rate of the cost of what the, the pull-up plus the step. Plus we got motor breakers and the paving and everything involved, without the challenges we're facing when it comes to incarceration in our community and, uh. Our budget's really, really solid. I I think it's easily just, I just wanted to break it up for discussion.
I I think the community understands that, you know, they, you know, doing coffee time, preparing and having people come in here, it wasn't like anybody was saying, I don't want you to have an extra sheriff's deputy or I don't want you to. Whatever, I think, I think people understand, but I also think it's clear that costs can't continue to increase in those areas in the way that they have. Without potentially putting a county in a lot of strain, so. With all that said, I'll make the motion that we approve the budget as, uh, accepted. At a second.
There is a motion in second to approve the twenty twenty-two budget. As presented, any further discussion? Commissioner Bull, Commissioner Brown, anything?
I don't think we've averaged it out here well. You know, we faced a lot of work in the center, increases, take care of the sheriff's office, sheriff office, going up. Nothing to do with the inflation and the way it's going.
What do you do? Based on, it's happening everywhere. Well, I was doing some, some reading too on some of the other counties, some county or city is taking it differently, you know, how they should be doing that salary increase too. Some of them are just saying we're, you just can't possibly keep up, and then some of them, like, I think it's stuck, it's been in there initially, five percent. I mean, so everybody's handling it differently, and I think we're trying to strike a balance, you know. Three percent probably isn't even enough to keep up with the inflation, but we're at least trying to keep our, as long as we can.
Not this year, it's not, C C B I is five point six.
Would have been maybe, yeah. So by the time you get.
But three percent's better than none.
Yeah.
We said three in, pretty July or whatever.
Well, at that point, it was like, oh, three looks like it might not be that bad, but it just started to escalate after that, like crazy, so.
Well, yeah, and we asked for, for three across the board. Do you have some come in greater than that? Should we make those adjustments or identify those that? And and put everybody at the, the same?
Why not? That's what we agreed on, was a three percent.
The three percent.
Now, that's what we. Okay, so I tried to, I'm there too, because I hate to see someone did six percent, and someone did three, and then they're talking that up, starting punches, why this happened?
Well, you know, Jeff.
Yeah, not to, not to call, uh, Mr. Jager under the carpet if you don't wanna talk, but I remember when we initially had you come and present your budget. You said that you had a larger increase as a place to negotiate. Do you wanna elaborate anymore on that before we get to go on this?
Well, some of it involves where I started and, you know, when you look at the proposals, there's the market point. I started pulling up, that's kind of already behind me at all. Um, so with the increase, it would be putting me to that point, or really close to, actually just shy of it. Um, or. It'd be right there. That's kind of where I was looking at. Um, I wasn't, I knew that I was gonna have to go for a bigger number to negotiate back in where I wanted to be. And that's kind of where I was trying to get to. I was trying to get to the market point where people are currently advertising for the same positions way higher than most. And it's because inflation, people just aren't applying, um, trying to find quality employees is difficult. So that's why I kinda went for that route. Get closer to the, the norm versus being behind and constantly trying to catch up. I think with inflation though, you're gonna, it's gonna be constant, I'm trying to catch up, it'll stop. And I'm not, in your defense, but across the board, I think we're behind across the board, but on the same token, it's not gonna stop for a while. I don't think we're gonna see it stop for a while, I don't think we can, but it's.
One thing I'd add to that too is I think it's, we didn't necessarily budget for it, but now that we have Brian on board, we're gonna have some flexibility maybe with some of those funds. I think it's probably gonna be beneficial next year that we should look at, looking at all of the salaries across the county to make sure we're competitive comparatively to other counties and then private sector as well as. The possibility of, I mean, in the highway department, for instance, we have multiple employees that are capped out on the years. So maybe we need to look at stretching the salary structure as well, so we can maybe, you know, if we wanna have employees at better raises than just at cost of living, because they're basically getting. I mean, and I understand that you can't have a, a blade operator at some point make a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, cause that's out of market, but at the same point, if you've been with us, you've been with us for thirty-five years, you deserve it at a decent rate. So, I mean, those are the people we need to protect. So I think it's, at some point this next year, we're gonna have to sit down with Brian and talk about, you know. Looking at leases, some type of a salary survey or structure. The other thing I would say too is, I think it would be beneficial at some point to talk, when we talk about that, to have some type of a structure for our employees too, so, you know, cause really look at a salary survey, why every last time did fourteen? That's too far in between them probably, so we should have some type of a structure, so if employees feel that their market value isn't correct anymore. They can talk to HR and then they can do just a salary survey around certain positions or maybe split it up, so every year we only do a certain position or something, so that we can try to stay more current. Because it, you know, everything moves so quick now, inflation, everything.
And it's so, so big.
Exactly, yes. Try, try to do it more often, but it's expensive to do a salary survey too, so that's part of it, do it very often.
I'll, I wanna discuss that too, and some of the, it's very difficult because you're comparing two other, quote, county sizes, they may be way below. And that just hurts everybody across the board.
Yeah, so that's why a, a full market study factors in, you know, private and everything else, you know, trying to say, where do we have to be at, to be fair, and to compete against other entities within our community and across the state to get people with the expertise necessary to get a job? So, I mean, if you're doing it correctly, I guess, so it's just something I think we're gonna have to look at.
That's why they always bring the private sector in other ways, yeah, we get way up the other. This is how it's.
On, and this isn't necessarily pertaining to this particular budget, but I'll say it too, in terms of listening to the discussion about defined benefit versus defined, defined contribution on pension plan as well. Is going to be huge for the county in the future, dependent upon what the legislature decides to do and how the Association of Counties attacks that once they make their decision. Because if it goes from a defined benefit to a defined contribution plan, that is going to be a negative for our employees in terms of long-term retirement. You know, we're gonna have to either increase wages or find a way to stay defined benefit or something, we're gonna have to look at that too at some point in time, unfortunately.
Cause that's one of the reasons why you keep the wages.
Exactly, because of the benefits, our, our health insurance and our retirement are fantastic.
That helps you.
Tea, tea.
I mean, people are in a whole family.
It's, there's just, it's, there's just a lot of stuff that, around in keeping quality employees that is really gonna start shifting here in the next year or two that the county's really, I mean, all of those other stuff. I mean, all of those other things.
We were talking about that health insurance plan a number of times.
And that's why when they only, that's why when they only do their studies, they put that into the wage. A lot of people don't understand that. I'll use the state jobs as an example. Every time there's a state job, they put all those benefits into that package and say, okay, if we take this benefit package away, this is where you're gonna be. When we put the benefit package in, this is where you're at. This is how this is comparing to the whole. Yeah, everybody has to take that in consideration that is working for themselves.
I think we do find in this survey, I really do. I think maybe we're a little bit behind on the salaries itself.
I think you're pointing out, we need to legislate lobby the, so the county's.
Well, I think, yeah, and and the, I I heard Bill Blum, very public class, who were, who was speaking, one of the gentleman who's the executive director for the city cities. And Derek Traynor had a little statement too when they were talking about how it's, it's a recruitment tool, but it's also a tool to keep high, high, long-term quality employees. Because, you know, we, it's, so I think it's gonna be a deal where in in talking for our Northeastern meetings too. If the state decides they're gonna do a defined contribution plan versus defined benefit, then. The counties and the cities are gonna have to sit down together and say, can we take this on ourselves? You know, and and how it can be functioning. So there's gonna be just a lot of, it's gonna be a lot of moving sand under all of this to figure out how exactly it's gonna function. But it's it's a huge improvement tool. You can say, we have quality retirement, we have quality healthcare, it's it's a full balance of fact. So it's it's gonna be something that's gonna have to be worked out. Step people here, they're wrong and they're, uh I think they're just starting to do the intro work on it right now.
I I think you're seeing, you're starting to see the change since people do apply for the job. But I know what we're hiring people where I'm at. That is one of the first questions. What are your benefits? One of the first questions they've asked me, you know, we're not in the interview, I won't be having a question. What are your benefits?
A- a- and a little bit in in Mr. Jager's uh defense, that is a. One of those unique positions where emergencies don't generally follow on eight to five Monday through Friday. Type of right area, um although I think uh we have quite a few essential. Positions within the 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 county that, you know, if there's a disaster that happens, uh. We're all answering it all, um whether it's emergency management or on to a credit risk office. On the highway, you know, if there's a storm or things need to be moved with heavy. So in part of that defense, you you know, Chris is a one man show with uh, when he first set up on call at the situation. Um, but the other aspect of it, the, you know, fifty percent of his salary is reimbursable by the state. So regardless of what we pay him, fifty percent of that salary is. The the state has not set a limit upon that, Chris? I didn't think so, yeah. And it's also a requirement that we have that position.
They they require proof that we, that we paid our half. Have they ever asked for that?
Yeah, I recorded.
Say we can just raise your salary, what, fifty percent would be what we want to pay them?
Well, okay, so, you know, the only, the only thing that probably bears bringing up on this, unless I missed something. What what number, Chris, were you using as your comparable? For what what is the average salary for?
I I actually um didn't pull that information because it's so difficult because I can't. I was looking at only counties though and and it it's so wide. Um, maybe, uh, I mean, if you give me a minute, I can pull it up and give you.
Well, I just, I just wanna know how you developed what you're at, you know, you told me basically that you were trying to get it in the average. I mean, the only reason that I I'm bringing all this up, you know, is last year, we added ten thousand dollars to risk management. Which is part of your salary also.
Right.
So functionally, last year, you got a ten thousand dollar increase to your salary. This year, we're gonna, if we approve the budget as written, we're gonna give you seven thousand more. On top of that. Um, right, because you you got paid in twenty twenty-one, you got paid fifty-three thousand four seven two two on emergency management. We're in about a sixty thousand eight hundred sixteen, which is an increase of fourteen percent.
No, that actually number is incorrect. That number was completely wrong. That was.
And that. Number is actually. Yeah.
That that the middle column is what was actual.
We paid was twenty-six thousand, is that our comp?
That's what we pay out.
State comes the other one. So but that's, that's half because we're paying there. So of of the the increase then, uh, because this number on the far right is the actual change in your salary, right? So half of that will be borne by us. Is that correct?
So great, yeah, four thousand dollars is per grand total.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Forty-six, thirty-nine, one-two grand. Yeah, the, there's the very first one you guys got, the very first information you got, the numbers that were reported wrong on my. Salary is studied for candy, I think sent out to the direct version for this, the.
Yeah, she did it. So what what was the fifty-three, four-seventies, two-three plus the step?
That was the wrong one.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-six. Fifty-six, one-seventies.
So that's what, if we added that in that way with.
No, that's the correct version. That's the right way. So the difference between what it will be. On the three, if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, would be fifty-six, one-seventy-six.
And you and you wrote down six, thirty-eight, sixteen, so basically four thousand dollars.
You worked this year for fifty-three dollars for that, you do, right?
No, because you gotta add this ten thousand from what we said we got last year. Well, no, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying that basic, basically, the only, the only concern that I have, Chris, and this isn't, this isn't to 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 pick on you. Is that on the whole, that means that in in two years, your salary has gone up by. You know, well, by the time this is done, it'll have been seventeen thousand dollars in two years.
I also wrote another half too that's in quote unpaid. It just quote falls underneath my budget.
Right, and and before that, it was always unpaid. Now, I'm not saying, and and when this came up last year, the reason that we. You know, or basically we're okay with it is because it's fine. It is, it is a responsibility and should be paid. I'm not arguing that. I'm I'm only arguing that that's a really big swing of of actual dollars and. If if, for example, every department came in and asked for the same thing over the course of two years. Well, the taxpayers would be paying a lot more money, you know, that'd be a huge expense. So I I'm I'm only, I'm only talking in terms of.
I I would, what what I would like to do is give across the board, three plus the step, I know that probably won't make you the happiest. But with the guarantee that we're gonna do a market study.
Well, and I, you know, I'm not, you know, I know that that's not.
I know that's not much of a year.
Where it's, it's gonna be difficult because if if. If we set a precedent that without having a non-market study, done our own research, that we we can do that. Everybody could come in and ask for that.
Yeah, and that and that's where we get into trouble. That's that's where I have a concern as well. I mean, even when we hire somebody new, it's based off of previous salary that always plus we have our step system already built in that was off of the previous market setting. Even if it is elevated, so we have something to hang around. But I I I just come back to the concept that we we have to try to stay more up to date with. Looking at salaries and, you know, competitive salaries so that we can stay competitive with other entities. Doesn't, we're probably, we're probably on a date, we probably need to increase.
Well, I think, you know, why why don't we just sort of agree now that we're gonna do what it takes to get a market study done in this next fiscal year?
Yeah, I think everyone results like they're on boards, it's a matter of.
Well, potentially I'm probably gonna change my motion because my motion was to approve the budget as as presented, which it sounds to me like. I think the world of this commission to change that.
I I was under the whole impression that we were going three percent across the board.
Right, it's because if we approve the budget as budgeted, that everything that we just discussed will, well, one of them will just be what's in the book. So the question that is is is, do, you know, do we approve that or do we put all these employees at three percent instead?
I'll I'll throw another wrench in the in the equation here.
I'd like to see the three percent with the step across the board that we agreed to off of the initial. Then I would like to see us at some point, once we get to the end of the year and see what the inflation value is, use those ARPA funds to get one-time compensation. To make up the difference in the inflation, to help, you know, people out. Plus, we'll have the money to do it. So that's, that's just my opinion.
In in that ARPA meeting, did they specify?
That's being essential employees.
So so not everybody would qualify for that.
I I know, we would have to look at who would be essential enough before we made that decision. I realize that, but I'm saying I would like to.
Let's leave this budget alone. Let's let's just go ahead and do it.
What did we agree on?
We've never been in a talk any other way. Right?
Chris, I think you were under that understanding while we were going through this, right, with the three percent?
No, what I proposed. So back to the marketplace or market point, it was actually a Excel spreadsheet that's available through the county. So it says your position one through twenty-five, that's the top. So the marketplace is where you, I would feel that a person would want to advertise for a position because that's where the market's at. I get it, I started with basically zero experience. I think I provided, proved myself, um striving every day. But I did, I started behind behind that. So now I'm behind, quote, what is in black and white, market point. Hence why I tried to get to that market point value. And I get it, asking for the money was probably tough, but when you're already way behind, it's even tougher. Because every increase is still slowly back.
Well, the market study that I involved every employee we have in the courthouse. You have a position, I have to study, not just certain ones.
Right.
Single them all, we gotta do it all.
I I understand.
Didn't fourteen. I never did agree with how we did it. I didn't, it's not that I didn't agree with the numbers, but I didn't agree how we did it. You know, we needed more input, we needed more facts. I think one of the ones they looked at them while showing, I think we looked at, started from the county. We didn't use Bradport or Farlow. When you did that, I have you. We didn't go into the oil. So that's kind of what you did then and I, the theory wasn't enough information.
And I kind of agree with you on that because then you're picking and choosing where you're you're.
We'll do a budget year, I'll make a motion if you have market study. I have no problem with that at all. But we, when we put three percent on the board for the budget. Yeah, things hadn't escalated like now already, you know, like you say, three, four, five months. I've never seen it jump like that. But when you got oil banging on eighty dollars. And I left college yesterday, I listened to the university chancellor, he said he's gonna go straight up, he's gonna go to a hundred. No question. There's a huge, sorry, sorry, diesel in Europe right now. Going into this community and people are gonna stack up. We can't raise food without that diesel. Can't raise all the food in the world. Like I said, I'll I'll make the motion if we do this study right away. All right, but I think we shouldn't wait till the first year. I think that's gonna run out of better idea on why are these counties.
Right, I, the first of yours, to me, is smarter, smarter than that because we don't think it's gonna happen. But we're, I'm a.
We're under county's, that's your budget's, that's what they do, you know, like how you should.
I think they, I think their initial had five, will will be perfectly, but I remember that I I read it, it was higher than what we were.
So is that, is that compromise acceptable to you?
We just can't. It's hard for us to step out of the box here.
I I understand that, I mean, I really do, but it's difficult looking at what they just opened my position for. In a fairly similar company, but if you wanna nitpick. You know, where you're selecting that from, you know, it's well above where my current salary is, that's what they're starting. And even their um their assistant was more than what I'm currently making. And it's it's difficult. And it's difficult amongst all of us, I mean, throughout the state, we look at the the general starting. Of a lot higher than what it currently was offered to both of us.
Well, yes, I I suppose we can fire everybody and then have them reply at a higher, higher range. Than than what they're currently making.
Well, and and well, and I, I come back to the concept of, it's, I understand where you're coming from, because. We're fighting this on every single outside board we sit sit on to that. You can go to Taco John's now and make fifteen dollars an hour and we've got people working for us, other outside entities like the library that are getting ten bucks an hour. And and we just can't keep up fast enough with how the budget cycle works on a year for year. We don't have the flexibility of private business to snap our finger and go over there and, okay. We're just gonna increase and then we'll just turn around and make the taco a dollar more.
Right.
You know, so we we just, we don't have flexibility with, I I I like to try to find a way to build more flexibility into the system. So we don't have to wait so long between.
And I, and I agree, I wanna be fair, I wanna be fair across the board and and that's a part of it, I understand. So, you know, I guess as long as we get a market study, so at least maybe we all can kind of improve on it.
Yeah, I mean, no, we do need to, right, and it's just, it's just a matter of carp and horse.
Yep.
Right, so the horse that'll pull everybody along, everybody, is when we do a market study. Because I'm I'm, I guarantee there'll be a rude awakening to this board.
All right, well, look, if you get a market study this year, correct, and they, and they increase many different.
You know, so it'll be a rude awakening. The problem is, is if if we just give the increase with no information on our side. And, you know, how how am I gonna look Lisa in the eye when she says she wants to to go up by eight percent next year? You know, because every, every, every other department, they took the this this step, which is, you know, timing performance and three percent, which is the cost of living. And they said, okay, that's fair, and that's always helpful. So I just think, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna make adjustments to everybody's salaries, we're gonna do it to everybody's salaries. You know, okay.
And I know some of those positions too we have. I mean, I've been capped for years. But it is what it is.
And and again, I'm frustrated by that.
You know.
I think we should stretch.
The only thing that I have on a cap is when people take the job, they know the cap's up.
I understand.
It's just like my job. I know my job capped out and I gotta face my wages now on, hopefully, there's always an increase.
Well, that's also, that's also the problem when you take a job, right, you you're agreeing to take that salary.
Right.
The only issue with that is like, I mean, for instance, like twenty-five year person that's under twenty-five years.
The, the only issue with that is like, I mean, for instance, like twenty-five-year person that's under twenty-five years, how the twenty-three-year guy is gonna make one hundred?
Yes, and that's where it runs out of levels, because then even, and, and we run into the issue too now, we don't stay up to date. That you're hiring somebody in, and that day-one hire with no experience might be coming in at a seven-year salary because you can't possibly hire someone in at that year-one salary. And, and, and that's, that's the compression issue, and the state's been dealing with it far more than us, comparatively speaking, but it's, it's, it's why you have to try to stay up to date, is that's what I mean.
I guess the, the step scale is the people, people who have been here less years versus the people who have been here twenty-plus. Get bigger increase than the longevity of the employees that have been here twenty-plus years.
Which.
I'm losing.
Well, you can always try to get your retire.
I can't.
That's why, yeah, I mean, that's why.
I can't.
Which.
Is that what you want? Is that what you want?
Probably one of the few in this room that can say that.
Dude, which, I understand.
I'll wait till I hit the board and then I'll.
Am I right?
I understand that we're trying to catch up on the older one, but at the same time, it's still, I mean.
Because you have, you have a lot of employees.
Yeah.
With longevity.
I know.
And you're still getting, you're still getting the cost of living if you're caped out.
Yep, we are, and I.
Which is, is good, so we're trying to keep you current so your earning power doesn't go backwards.
Right, that's how they explain.
And I, I keep trying to remind employees that you're getting full benefits.
That's in the motion, that's in the motion.
Like, I keep reminding them, yeah, and I agree with that. That's there, that's a great benefit, especially when you get older.
That's cool, that's cool.
Well, okay, I mean, let's try to. Guys, we've already, we've already changed from our plan, sorry, we're back.
Already gonna change the motion.
I will make the motion that we approve the twenty-twenty-two budget as presented. With all employees having their salaries adjusted by a step and three percent. Is that correct? We gotta put that in?
I will direct to what our initial budget was, yes, I will.
Can you say, like, based on evaluations?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Based upon normal employees.
Of course, yeah.
The other word, go ahead.
And to.
Yeah, it, well, I mean, I don't know.
I think that's, but others make that separate.
Yeah.
Make it separate.
Budgets.
Yeah.
Motion in a second.
Boy, I'd like to thank all our employees.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, very good job.
We have a, a great group of employees and, and if, if it hasn't been said recently, I'll say it again. They're our most important asset. And everything that each and every one of them do is greatly appreciated, so.
Being, being at convention for the last couple of days and you sit, you visit with other counties. Yeah, like, you got some companies that are losing three, four on the top. Yeah, they're just quit. County was one, nobody, nobody, they're quit.
Retired?
Quit, quit, quit.
Couldn't be long.
Couldn't be long.
So, we have people that get along and.
Exactly, yeah.
You guys are scared.
I don't mind saying this either, you have a lot of companies that, that.
And that's. And that's.
You should get a lot of pretty ones.
Well, I'm, and I'm fortunate that most of it, it's like a shed of juice, so, I hope it stays that way.
Sometimes.
We screwed the discussion.
If not, uh, should we do a roll call on the, uh, budget?
Sure.
Sure.
Oak.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Leifon.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye. Twenty-twenty-two budget is, uh, through my approval.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with a market study, uh, in January, starting in January of. Uh, twenty-twenty-two, and that's we allow Mr. Singer to, to lead that for us, for all our employees.
Commission plan.
Come out with a plan.
And, and rather than commission of the plan.
Yeah. Well, okay. A planned for a market study for all our employees, starting in January twenty-twenty-two.
Because there will be a cost involved in that, sure. Yeah, so.
I'll second that.
Okay, moving second that we, uh, correct our HR director, Mr. Singer, to deploy items, start researching and bring forward a market study. For employees.
Positive.
Market study. Any, uh, further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close and sign. Motion carries.
It's okay, we're not one.
Yeah.
Someone in relation to this whole thing, I, I, I don't know if we do it or not, but do we give our employees a total compensation sheet that adds up to everything, that, all the benefits, so. With, with the wages, with the retirement, with the healthcare, and a total dollar figure of what you're receiving as a total package from the county, yes, by per employment? Just out of curiosity.
It's just on your, on your pay stub, yeah.
Is that with retirement and everything else at the end of the year, so you see that, okay, I understand.
What insurance, what insurance, like, health insurance.
Okay, I just, I'm, I just think that's, I think it's really beneficial because they do that for all children, and, and you see. Through HR, and this is what my wages, but by the time you add on all the benefits and health insurance, everything, it really. And it shows you a total picture of what, what you get, and a lot of times when you do that, people realize that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it takes a longer time than HR do that.
Yeah, we, we put that out every, every first of the year, that should come off, so that.
Well, it's, it's on, it's on the bottom half of our pay stubs, so they get, of what it is monthly, and then what your regular total is.
And then, so, so your last paycheck of the year, you can see the round total of the full compensation.
Because the county portion of it has the, um, the asterisk or the stars beside it of what the county.
I, I think that's.
The only reason I, I agree with that is because, for instance, if you will, you prepare to offer your, you can always take that into.
Well, yeah.
Oh, this is your math, okay, am I really doing math?
Yeah, well, and that, that's where. You'll make you considerate. Well, I think that's where I'm saying, I, a consideration when you're talking public versus private, because if you go from full health coverage to fifty percent health coverage, you gain. You gain ten thousand dollars worth of salary, but you lose twelve thousand dollars of premium, or worth of, uh, health insurance upfront, premium that you have to pay out of pockets, you have to live backwards, even though it looks like you're making more money. Plus, our retirement plan is better than any retirement plan you're gonna get anywhere else, so I, I think it's just, we're good again.
And thank you for paying for health insurance.
Yeah, that's true.
Because it's. We've got a good plan and it's, yeah, I mean, you know.
Well, I never mind.
It's a hit.
Making sure that our employees are taken care of.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay, I said enough. Any. Moving on. Uh, last item of unfinished business, uh, proof letter to the city of Devil's Lake. Uh, this is something that we've been discussing since, uh, the August, when preliminary budgets were, um, first finalized. Um. We had our attorney, our state's attorney, Mr. Cummings, uh, draft a letter for us. Uh, it has each of our, uh, lines on it, or a signature. And any further discussion on sending that?
I think it looks good, not wanting to sign it as a sort of, okay? But I guess I'll make the motion that we get approved, sign it.
Um, I'm for signing it too, I think, uh. We need to come to something that has to happen. We've been talking about this day I started, this car issue. And I see both sides, but I'm just saying, open, it has, yeah, big health problems, something has to happen. We can't keep going like this. What happened to us was we're coming up with another seventy thousand dollars right at the end of the budget. Seventy thousand dollars, be realistic. We had that seventy thousand, we could have gave him the raise that he was looking for. You're giving a lot of raises. It's just, it's frustration that they waited to the end. That's my biggest frustration. If you didn't wanna do that, why didn't you just let us know? So we could have budgeted out throughout, you know, candy's not jumping through, but where am I gonna come up with this money now? You know, it's a little late in the game to say, ah, yeah, they played, I don't care, it was played. And that's wrong, what if we would have played that game and did that to them, they would have been happy. There's nobody here that can say we'd be happy if someone did that. This, this is a bad call.
Well, it's not, and it's not just us, although we picked up the tab, it's unfair to every other member of that agreement, right?
So. I'm not happy that we're putting more people into it either. It's just the way it is.
Well, and it, it, it's not like it's been a one-time, right, instant, you know, it, it's been ongoing since I've been a commissioner. Um, since Mr. Brown's been a commissioner, um, it seems to be an ongoing recurrence, and. I, I think this letter kinda indicates our frustration and unsatisfaction with how that's played out, and that we need to come to the table and come up with a joint overs. Agreement on that law enforcement center and then move forward with the, the joint, uh, agreement between the, the four, five entities that are part of that.
At least in public, we'll.
Yeah.
Is there any language that you would like to see changed in the letter? Is, is it stern enough to get across your point?
I believe so. Yeah, I think it's stern up, stern up front the way it needs to be, just expressing that we're frustrated, but that we want to just sit down and try to handle this thing out, because we think it's beneficial for all parties, be it this thing. Let's figure it out, basically.
I would just suggest one, well. I would put the figure there that we. Wasn't the budget at the end.
Sure, pull that real quick.
I think we added the, uh.
Add the sets. Stage general, I don't have to.
And it was.
They play the system.
Yeah, didn't we round that up to, uh, even eighty thousand?
I don't.
Yeah.
The frustration I had, it wasn't like. Where I had to try to go over there a little bit. How many times was he put on the agenda that I got canceled after a meeting?
Well, even we got blown off, I mean, when we were having meetings, well, you know.
To me is, could you imagine if we did that to the public that comes in here, we just blow them off, and they're like, oh, sorry, you don't have time, I move on. We just pissed off people, and that's not what we're here for. Kind of, granted, you're not gonna get everybody happy, but you're gonna try to work with it.
Yeah, well, generally speaking, I mean, if it's, if, if it's a, as big a concern as the city feels that it is. Then you should want more overall kinds of communication with individuals that are doing the budgeting, running the facility, and make sure that the communication is there, we should, and to be handled. Not last. Quality communication usually solves a lot of problems. They talk a lot of stuff.
So, the suggested change then is in line for. Consentence is, is our opinion, the city of Devil's Lake has not adequately fulfilled its obligations. To the residents of the city and the other invested entities by underfunding the law enforcement center, the changes by eighty thousand dollars. And it's recent budget, is there a motion for that? And or by approximately eighty thousand dollars, whichever you put for it.
I do some proxy.
Approximately is. Did you make the motion?
I, I made a motion, but I don't have a motion, and technically all this discussion's been out of order, so. That's okay.
So, you, you made a motion to.
I, I'll, I'll, I'll add my motion to, to, to say that, uh, you add approximately thousands in that sentence, by approximately a thousand.
I will second the motion that we sent the letter with the up commended.
Do you have a motion and a second on the table?
By, by way of clarification before we approve this, there, ever, it's the intention of every commissioner, be it two signing this, correct, I don't wanna, I don't wanna approve this on behalf of commissioner, have, a commissioner with the empty signature line.
Yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll have a roll call vote, and then we can have most changing it as we're, as we're going, we can have that, uh. And print it out before we leave and sign before everybody leaves their own today. Clear?
All right.
Roll call, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Oak.
Aye.
Leifon.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye. Motion carries. You got that?
Yeah, I'm sending it to Nathan right now, and I will.
Just have a good caller that you did.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Moving on, any other unfinished business? Uh, new business, approve special permit.
Okay, approve.
Motion and a second to approve the special permit. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close and sign. Motion carried. Approved, or appoint a North Coast State Fair delegate. State Fair delegate, uh, State Fair Association meets in November, I believe, and might not, or is it Bismarck issue, can't remember. Uh, I know. Um, what, one year I went to Bismarck for it. It's upside down the road, but.
Does this have to be a commissioner, you want that?
I don't believe it does.
Can we somebody put their role there?
Oh, as a county commissioner, you're responsible, we're just responsible to point one delegate.
We have already have.
Specify that Mr. must reside in your county, less than.
Time is on the state. We're sending her, she's the regional rep to the state board, we're sending these representatives on the county.
They, it's their annual meeting, and they've got to kinda go through everything that went on in the, in the past year, they go through the, uh. All the payments, whether, all the prizes, the, the books from the fair.
It should be somebody that goes to the fair, you know.
So, this is a one-time, who else?
I can. I can look.
I'll make a motion that way.
I already have a third word out.
Moving second that we, uh, appoint Commissioner Oak to attend that. Um. I believe it's, uh, November sixteenth. November sixteenth at one P M at the, uh, State Fair Center. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close and sign.
I'll need to add, I mean. You can't make it, that's why I'm sure my daughter. I got, they go there to spend the week, and they got kids, so. I think somebody should go to the, yes, somebody should be involved.
You're positive this is November sixth.
You can't go, let, let me know when I'm up.
One P M, you, usually they can show up at noon, I think they have a, a lunch, uh, soup and sandwiches, uh, for delegates. You know, I'll, I'll. All right, moving on, approve Raffel permit.
Move the rule.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Raffel permit in your pageants. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close and sign. Motion carries. Uh, set appraisal values and hearing date for October nineteenth at five forty-five P M.
Oh.
This is the more favorable list, is that correct?
Sorry.
Moving second that we set appraisal values and hearing date for October nineteenth, twenty-one, five forty-five P M.
How many properties we have?
We ended up with. We ended up with six, seven. About hundred and thirty-eight.
I know Candy and Lisa were.
We were.
I know we're running the phones, um, taking in a lot of, a lot of money last week, so appreciate you guys.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
So. Do we have motion to approve that?
Do.
Yeah.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries. Uh, CPR first aid training, uh, this is something that, uh, Mr. Jager and Mr. Ruben have been working together with, um, coming up with the, an idea to get some first aid training for our employees. I think the cost is sixty dollars per person, correct?
Yeah, it's if you want to be certified, that's if you want to be certified, um, basic lifesaver, sixty dollars per person. That includes the card, because the card costs twenty dollars, ninety dollars. Um, they also will do, um, basic first aid and basic, um, CPR without certifications for less, uh, ten dollars per person for CPR and then ten dollars, um, for the first aid, and it's kind of a combo class. So, just looking at, uh, I know it's been a while, I've had a lot of people asking me when the next class is going to be available, and then whether they want to be certified or uncertified as well. So.
Just the approval.
Need, need, need approval to go ahead and now, um, pay for that, they were.
I was thinking the basement, the big training room, we're hoping.
Reduce his liabilities and all our department head needs to be certified. And, uh, and there'd be obvious ways of expenditure within that, that we'd pay for their, their certification fee. So it'd be what, another sixty dollars or?
One of the things they learned is how to use the wall, but.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I should have said that AEDs would be covered, um, and actually I would like, I mean, the best is mandatory, mandatory to it, is, uh, learn how to just basic operations of the.
I think it's beneficial, probably.
Very beneficial, yeah.
You never know if we're gonna come up with an accident, say, somebody has an issue with a desk. It's good to just be.
Kevin, are all your guys first aid trained, no? We do have a couple that are certified three years.
Is it, is it good for like every three years? Two, sort of, three, two years.
They're just available for them, and, uh, that's old.
It's, it's, it's part of that motion that we're gonna pay for it as well, correct? You know, what are we gonna use COVID funds or?
Sure.
I'll say. Okay, good news, I think.
Fifty years ago. Motion and a second to go ahead and offer that for our employees. Thank you, Mr. Jager, Mr. Ruben for us for bringing that up and Lake Region Handling Service. So, any further discussion? Not all those in here, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sure you know Lord Rashana, give the date, uh, if that's what's going to happen. Uh, put that to Brian, and Brian can sugar it up, but, uh, can pay. He can yell some sort.
Wonderful, sure.
Any other new business? If not, visitors and delegations. Don't everybody speak for us? Uh, portfolios. Sir, Commissioner Lightton?
Well, uh, I don't have anything too exciting. Visited between the state's attorney and the court system yesterday, uh, about expansion, state's attorney's office, employees we just approved. Uh, don't have a solid plan yet, but we've got a few ideas that we're bandying about, and we're gonna have to visit with some, some different individuals, and hopefully we'll try to figure out what we can and cannot do. Uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tight. We need to, we need a little bit larger courthouse, that isn't gonna happen, so we're excited to figure out how to make it work accordingly. Um, I think, what else? Excitement, we already talked about, uh, we had a really nice, really good hiring committee. Thank the hiring committee that was also on, Sarah was on, part with myself, uh, Adam Winju, uh, representing, mentioned a crop improvement, uh, and then we also had Preston Cindy, uh, position A of pathologist work. So, a big thank you to everyone that sat on that. Took all of the whole morning, so the afternoon, everything done, but it worked really well. Um, from outside boards, um, I believe I have a library board meeting next week. Um, our chair was working with the city to get, uh, job description prepared, the advertising, we'll get motion to elaborate, prove that finish, so, uh, she'll be, that'll be up really quickly, I would guess, so, hoping we get some good applicants and get that taken care of really. Uh, other than that, I don't think I have a big lot. For the Devils Lake, we, we met with, uh, a few guys who like to get free missions, and when the commerce department came up, then, uh, busy, we had a little bit. So, uh, interesting to, to learn how commerce functions and some of the bottlenecks and stuff like that, so that was a good, uh, genetic.
All right, Commissioner Volk?
I was starting the lake access, um, we didn't have a meeting in August, I suppose August is that one coming up. But the big news is, um, our business works sticking with the bottom frame, like, send a six mile angle around, because right now you can't put any moves in there, you drop off the edge of the water belt, and once you drop off the edge, East Bay will landings at like two feet to get out of there, so we're working on working on all of that. We had that big A S thing, I can, um, just re-oster it, like, trying to have a new tool, like, fight for invasive species like tiger mussels. They're putting in a three D cleaning station, plenty of over this year. Actually put that in. Moving on to Fair Board, put a committee together for, uh, building to talk about, we got paid from the rodeo, but then, for each shot, and yet, play another event. So we'll put together that. Recorder's office, they said that they rounded off records that are kind of state, historical society, that got all done. And I talked with Lisa, um, on our primer account, making a hundred and twenty-three dollars in three months. Over windows, maybe the long-term thing. Federal COVID money. Start being around me so we can spend that.
Um, we can spend the interest out of it. So I was thinking every December thirty-first, how long we could have it, I would just move those funds. Now, it might be fifteen, hundred, couple thousand dollars, but it's still general funds. I'd rule it out.
We're talking to two mill, two CDs, we've got twenty-three zero percent of approval here, two mill. That's not so good in the market.
Yeah, but it's better, yeah.
Right now, our money that we put at three percent was three mill, but the disposable funds is way better than the money market.
Correct.
So, so you had to track it. And we'll be getting a quarter of the state of them.
Correct, and I can give back the candy if that's something that you all want to take a look at.
Hey, help.
Yeah, and then candy you just say.
So go and pack it.
Good tool to look at.
Sure.
Other than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, Steve Hall at the jail again, we cleared yesterday, and we're there through mine. It was just being pulled off, leaving the house. I don't know where. That'd be each possible. So, you know, it's gonna seem real good, so.
I haven't managed to get in the C. Sheriff, uh, this week yet. Um, you heard from what's going on with District Health, uh, so I don't know that I have so much to add on that. And the Heritage Center, it actually has gotten a ton of grants recently. It's done really well. Um, they had some problems with, um, leaking pipes. And they had the city come, and the, the pipe leak was essentially somewhere in the wall of the structure, which, well, what it really was, was a, was a claw. It was in the wall of the structure, so that was gonna be really difficult, uh, to, to get it fixed. They actually did get it fixed, and it sounds like the city is going to forgive the man-hours that they put in. So they're not gonna charge the Heritage Center for that. Um, but that should stop that basement from flooding, which really means that the only major, the two major problems that remaining for the Heritage Center structurally are, uh, that the roof keeps leaking occasionally, right, about every spring, and then those steps on the front are collapsing, but, but, given what has been on with it in the past, that's where we're getting closer, so, that's good. Good? That's all, yeah.
All right, thank you. Well, uh, we have a whole lot, I want to thank, uh, Candy for all her hard work and her department, and, uh, certainly I recognize the people that, uh, gone down to the NDA CO conference, we had really good representation on there from Ramsey County. Three of us commissioners, uh, just about all our department heads who were down there, uh, Lisa, Kevin, Candy, Beth. Beth from the recorder's office, um.
Ryan.
Ryan, um, was there. Sheriff Nelson was there. Uh, so, yeah, it was a good, good opportunity to learn a lot of different things. That, uh, money that we have, I think we should, uh, maybe come up with a committee, I'm not sure who exactly should sit on that committee to help, uh, determine, uh, how we spend that and what our, our greatest needs are. I know we have some political subdivisions that are already looking at, uh, asking for some of that money. Uh, political subdivisions, uh, are held in the same standard that we would be held under, uh, same situations. So if they misspend the money, it doesn't fall back on them, but it'll all back on us. Um, and we would have to repay that money back to the federal government, so we want to be very careful on how we spend that money. Um, but I think we need to come up with, um, what our greatest needs will be, uh, within the county and how to best spend that. Like, we mentioned before, it's a one-time expenditure, we don't want something that's gonna be established as a reoccurring expense for that, because then we'd have to end up putting that bill back upon our taxpayers. Um, I think that we have some needs within our own building that, uh, could be identified and, and spent, um, that potentially would be expenditures down the road. But, uh, you know, if we're gonna have this money, we need to spend it wisely, I think, and, and, uh, come up with a, a method of, i- if we don't spend it right here within ourselves, and we're gonna divvy it out to political subdivisions, we need to have a criteria on how do we come up with prioritization list for that, and who qualifies, and how much they qualify for, kind of thing. But I, I think that would be a, a proof of we, uh, to go about doing that. I know the state will be meeting in November, um, to discuss not only redistricting, but spending some of their COVID dollars and how it gets distributed to, back to counties. Um, I know there's a lot of different asks out there. Um, people are asking for buckets of money, and, uh, I think there is something in, uh, on the news last night, that Long Term Care Association is asking for, I think, forty million of that, for additional staffing, uh, for their entity, I think, uh, same thing for a lot of different, uh, associations, agencies that have gone through very difficult pandemic over the past eighteen months and are asking for some of those dollars back from the state, so. Um, yesterday was a, a deadline for getting those proposals in, a very short timeline of, of getting those additional requests in and proposals into legislative council. I think, uh, corporation committees, uh, for both the House and Senate will be meeting next week in Bismarck, and moving towards a November legislative special session, or reconvening last year's, uh, session, however they determine how they're gonna be done. All moving forward, I think, uh, Devils Lake Airport Authority were moving forward on the projects that they have identified and spending some of their COVID dollars that they've received, and, um, so we're moving forward with that. Um, Water, uh, Ramsey County Water Board is meeting, I think, Monday, they're gonna have a joint meeting with Cavalliter County on taking a look at how that Edmore, uh, assessment district vote went and what their next steps are for, um, re-proposing that. Uh, the Devils Lake Joint Board, we are accepting nominations for our Water Stewardship Award from county commissions, extension agents, soil conservationists, you know, water resource districts, individuals, uh, for our Water Stewardship Award that we present in, uh, December at our annual convention. Uh, the Joint Board is currently working on a project, uh, doing the maintenance project at the Morrison Outlet, uh, going from Dry Lake East to Morrison Outlet, and, uh, working on that project. I had talked to Kevin about some bridge debris underneath that bridge, uh, next to the Webster Cemetery, you know, there, we'll take some structures from an old bridge that was maybe in there, and, uh, maybe ask for some help, uh, remove some of those structures as they begin obstruction, both to, uh, water flowings through there, as well as, uh, safety concerns for anybody that's traversing underneath that bridge with an ATV or stonemobile, and, uh, happened to run into something like that. Uh, we currently have pause construction, working on a, uh, a maintenance project throughout that entire channel. I think it's roughly about five and a half miles that we're working on over there. Other than that, uh, all knows his business. Um, nobody's signed up for a specific time for a Lake Region Law Enforcement Center tour. Um, so, and maybe what we'll do is, uh, I'll just set a date and a time and, and we'll, uh, we'll sign up. I think it's very important to, uh, to go through that facility, take a look at it, have Rob point out some of the limitations that we currently have within that existing facility, what your ideas are for enhancements or expansions over there, but I also thought that it was a great idea to have, um, legislators invited to those tours as well. I don't know if anybody signed up for that, but, um, Rob's always open for a tour over there, and if anybody wants to head over there. Uh, today, I know any county commissioner is, uh, planning to bring their entire commission up today for a tour through there. But I think, uh, kind of whether or not State's Attorney Cummings has gone through there, auditor has gone through there, anybody else that would like to, uh, an opportunity to get a tour of the jail, although actually written on a, uh, orange jumpsuit, this would be an opportunity to do so.
I can arrange orange jumpsuits, too.
Good. It's much, much better this side of the jail than one of the different ones.
That'd be interesting.
So, we'll, we'll, we'll set up a day at a time, uh, to do that, let people know, and, uh, hopefully we can get people in there.
I can hear the little.
No, was it, uh, you guys are maybe coming today?
What's up?
Your Rob talk, we're telling you that today, so, uh, I'm gonna wait and make it, I'm gonna need some Mississippi juice. Any other discussions for the day? Any other update news? Any blinds, want to point those out?
Sure.
I'd be very sure, we've got a lot of positive comments from, from those, a little well to, uh, general resistance.
I think we need to see outside. See, the room feel way bigger now.
I would zone, looking at a drive.
So we're, it's a great improvement, so, but with that.
More speaker?
Second.
You're hereby adjourned, thank you all for the.